Is called to order. Role call to determine a quorum. Ms. Middleton.
Ms. Sager.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Jay Green.
Here.
Mr. Dick Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Madam Board.
May you understand? On vacation. Heavenly Father, we come to you once again asking that you will prevail in our hearts and prevail over this meeting. That we will yield our will to you in the best interest of this city. We ask that you will bless the children of our community and families as we endure the activities that happen that breaks our heart. We ask that you will bless the families who are suffering at this time. These blessings and others we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Salute. Go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in his liberty and justice for all.
And it brings us to item number three. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Louisiana open meeting laws provide that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless the extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members, mayor, department heads, or city employees. I want to forego any announcements.
Okay, look, I'm in.
Excuse me?
Hold on a minute.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, Joanne Bradford, thirteen twenty, South Washington Street. And I, here I want to know, did you have a copy that you can make available to the public of an amended consolidated budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four?
Sure, we can, we can make that happen.
Okay. Uh, um, I think it should be reviewed publicly before y'all vote on it. And also, um, on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, can I speak on that one too?
Raise the mic now.
There should be some, some copies available in the clerk's office. At the administrative office.
And I review, I want to reserve my comments till I can look at that budget. And also, with the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, do you think by not having the twenty-three audit prepared, it wouldn't have an effect on that budget? Because, you know, if you had the audit, you could see where you need to improve, uh, change things. But I'll just reserve my comments, the rest of my time.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Okay, uh. Okay. Item number five, our recess to sales tax district number one meeting. And we have two agendas. Let's keep this one straight this time. Two agendas. All right, role call to determine a quorum. Ms. Middleton.
Ms. Sager.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Jay Green.
Here.
Mr. Dick Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Madam Board.
Okay. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Louisiana open meeting laws provide that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members, president, or the city employees.
Okay. Do you have a comment? Can you make available this amended operating budget as well for a public review before a vote is taken?
Okay, it should be in the office, put in the clerk's office.
Is a clerk, uh, or a assistant clerk available to, to give it to us?
Um, Ms. Austin. Would you go and get a, a copy real quickly, please? Okay, this time I will ask for a motion to approve amendments in June twenty, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, meeting June twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-four, special sales tax meeting, issue number one.
Yes ma'am. We have a motion?
So.
And a second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item number five, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-sixty-eight, BTS one thirty-four, amending an operating budget and street projects for revenues and expenditures for the bachelor sales tax district number one for the fiscal year beginning July one and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, and adopting an operating budget and street projects for revenue and expenditures for bachelor sales tax district number one for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. I'll maintain a motion on this resolution. Attorney Jones, you have a copy of those resolutions to hand out.
All ahead of my time.
Do you all remember copies?
I saw them here. Did you go over those streets? I thought I saw it.
It was in the back there.
It's in the back, okay.
I don't know, there was the last man before the.
Okay.
They should.
Can we read those in the minutes individually? Can it be read in other minutes individually?
Yeah. Okay, if that's what, it, it's the, uh. Sorry, this one was. So, as it relates to anything that you want to place in the minutes, the law says it's very minimal, but it also says any member of the board can request things be placed into the minutes specifically or added to it. So if the request is, uh, uh, Mr. Locke to have it added to the minutes, we can have it added to the minutes. Uh, the specific of the resolution, the actual body of it. And if, if you wanted to do it out of brevity to save time, you could, you could request to have the entire resolution reproduced in the minutes. What, what streets?
Yeah.
I don't think I have.
I, I saw, I think it's somewhere.
I, uh, can I, can I say something, please?
Right, please. Mr. Locke asked.
Oh, well, not that, okay. But how do you?
Before those streets.
So this is all I know?
This is, well. West and South. And what is it that you questioned, Mr. Locke?
No, just those, I need read in the minutes.
Which item?
Streets.
Streets.
The particular streets that will be.
No.
Attorney Jones.
So the, the request is which specific, which particular streets this, this street budget applies to?
Right.
Oh. It's not on there, I didn't see it. I don't, I don't have a copy of which streets it applies to.
We need names first, can we table it to, to get the information we need?
Yeah, of course. I mean, uh, uh.
I think, I think Jackson Street.
Uh, uh.
Oh, no, somebody knows.
That, that's probably, no.
Okay, Jackson, Rosina.
I, I just want to make sure we know Jackson. Yeah, probably the safest procedure on that would be to create a list and then have that list, uh, when any member per the law could ask to have that list included in the minutes as to, and, and reproduced in the minutes to show what streets it would apply to.
Correct. Okay. Item.
Um, let's, let's, let's table it.
What, which street? Okay. And ask to see. Okay. Let's, let's make sure we're clear on your request, uh, Mr. Jones. Mr. Locke is requesting that the streets be added in the minutes.
Correct. Correct, as I, as I understand it, he's requesting that the specific streets that this budget applies to be appended to the minutes and reproduced, the list, with the minutes for the meeting in which this budget is going to be adopted.
Thank you.
Is that clear? Okay.
That leaves us where we're still just at a discussion point without a, an action on the table. So somebody can make an, an action and then a second, then we can have further discussion. So, I believe Mr. Jay Green has, has said that he wishes to table, is that a motion?
Yeah.
I would say so.
I, I should.
And is it to table to a specific date?
Uh, second week in July?
It's today.
It'll be right.
So, process rate, let me, let me, let me throw the process up.
It's not gonna, you deal with the process of.
And so, inhibit the process, the law underneath the Budget Act is, is if it's not adopted by the, the July first is where, uh, where July, July, physical year, then you operate on fifty percent of the operating budget previously adopted in the year that was previous. I mean, so you have fifty percent of your budget to work off of. And it's not fifty percent of each month, it's fifty percent of the aggregate budget. So I mean, you have fifty percent to operate for however long, so I mean, for, for, yeah, for the two week period. It'd be harder to see that you'd spend fifty percent of your budget on.
We have all, Mr. Black, did we do the all in favor?
Yeah.
And Mr. Locke's motion was. It was just, it was yours, Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Okay, repeat your motion for the.
Motion to table the resolution until, however, the schedule, council meeting.
Seven.
Okay. Root and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Okay, with the next time, I'll just ask Mr. Council Draper, did indicate he wanted to speak to.
The council. City government. Attorney, uh, through the budget and, and how budgeted and how the process and procedure we should be going through and who should be present, who should not be present, who should be doing what, and who should not be doing what. Uh, councilman, you have your charter, would you please?
Um, yes, I can.
I, I just want the council to be, I mean, he can, this legal, I meant for legal, legal, this legal opinion, that's basic. Before we go any further, we like to operate according to law. And, and, and definitely to our charter, we want to operate according to charter. We seem to be out of order, we seem to be, uh, disordered here with documents flying around and who this, but could you get section of?
Well, we're deviating from the agenda.
No, no, this, this, with the budget. Let's, let's talk about budget and finance and the property of the city, and that is.
We're, 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 we're in a street meeting.
About the street, you gotta be budgeted, no? We just, we just go to street.
Okay, and, and a motion, second, was you now was, hold on it?
Right.
That's where we are, Attorney Jones?
Yeah, I mean, you have another, you have another budget coming before you on the next.
But that, that, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah, we have to recess to.
I, I want to come in before the recess so we can understand, so we can do it properly according to law. I'm asking for your legal rights, and we, uh, we following the law, uh, and our charter as well.
I think once you adjourn the tax meeting, you're gonna be open to regular meeting again.
Okay, okay.
If you didn't end that time.
Okay, then, but we.
But I got, I got.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's for under law.
Okay. Item number six. I'm adding to a motion, a motion to adjourn the sales tax meeting.
I'm in motion.
Second. Probably move, and second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that takes us back to, um, resuming special meeting. Item number seven. Role call to determine a quorum.
Ms. Sager.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Jay Green.
Here.
Mr. Dick Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Item, before we get into resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six to seven, I have some responses in reference to some questions that were raised. And I'm going to go through this as quickly as possible. And then I will open up the floor. All right, we had some questions and we went from, from district A to district E. One question was, what would it take to open the police department again? Okay, Chief Reed, I'm gonna ask you to come and give the standard for operation. And I ask that you call your comments.
But recently.
While, while Chief Reed is getting his paperwork together, go ahead, um. Mr. Dick Green.
Uh, Chief Reed. Chief Reed, goodie, before you say something, I just want to come in, you in the marshal office on a job well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that comment, Mr. Dick Green. Go ahead, Chief Reed.
Okay, so, in reference to, uh, what it, uh, uh, operating standards, uh, the legal number, the op, the number of officers needed to legally operate is governed by the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, uh, state and federal guidelines for all municipalities and such. For a city our size, the minimum amount of officers that we can have patrolling is three.
Three?
Yes, that's the minimum amount for a town our si, a city our size. The minimum, that's the minimum amount you can have on the ship is three.
On the ship, okay, so.
Yes, three on the ship.
On the ship. It's just whole, in every.
The to, the total amount to operate four ships, you need at least twelve officers. There will be three on each ship, that's on patrol.
I have a question, whenever he gets done.
Okay, we're gonna go through the entire prospect, make a note of your question when we get it open to the floor. So we're trying to get through all of the items that were, um, questions that were raised.
So we're gonna ask questions.
We can, we can, we can.
We'll, we'll make next question, we just, let's stay in order. Okay, let's, let, we're gonna go through all of the, everybody's comments that were made, all interrupted. Go ahead, Chief.
So currently, we have fifteen full-time employees, one part-time employee, and, uh, two prospect, two prospects in the hiring process. Eight of these employees work on patrol, which needs a minimum of twelve officers to operate four shifts, with three officers twenty-four seven. Since July of twenty twenty-three, the police department has hired two recruits as of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. These recruits are not post-certified, they must attend the police academy on August twenty twenty-four. Upon completion of the academy, they have to do a four-month field training. That's where they learn the streets policy and procedure of the police departments, and learn patrol on their own. Um, after they complete the field training program, they'll be released on their own. This puts the total process before they can be released on their own to spring in twenty twenty-five. Currently, six officers are wa, working two-day shifts on patrol. The two-night shifts are being covered by the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Office. We have three full-time employees in the administration division, it's myself, Assistant Chief Pace, and Detective Captain Higgins. One part-time detective, uh, Community Rix.
Okay. We're gonna hold all the questions and go through what was presented last week. Just hold your thoughts, some comments, and open the floor. Okay. That was in response to, uh, what would it take to open the police department again twenty-four seven? And I believe that particular question, um, transcended all of the board of, all the people. Thank everybody, it was a consensus. Okay, thank you, Chief. And the next question, court salaries, police jury, thirty thousand dollars. In response to that, the parish police jury pays the city voucher for court salaries because they have a part of the ward that is outside of the city. Uh, another question was, um, reference to international paper company. Leachit, leachit, how do you say that? I don't want to mutilate somebody's. But, uh, that's a revenue from international paper companies treating wastewater from their private landfill. Um, miscellaneous income, sixty thousand dollars, what was this budget for? It's a revenue, a non-sufficient charge to checks to go into an account, donation for events such as the, the Dr. Maple John, the cleanup, the veterans lunch, uh, paid for by sponsors, the kindergarten movement, sponsorship, airport liability, insurance claim, insurance claim on parks, trucks, insurance claim, welcome sign repairs, and police calendars. Another question, uh, was breakdown of the police department into shifts. Okay, Bachelor Police Department, Chief Reed, if you'll come back and talk, speak to those shifts.
Okay, we have four shifts. We have one hundred shift, two hundred shift, three hundred shift, four hundred shift. Two-day shifts.
Chief, uh, I think, I think speaking of also should be five.
Of course, administration is five hundred shift. I was just speaking of patrol. On patrol, we have four shifts, one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, and four hundred. Um, right now, we're operating two hundred and three hundred shift. They consist of, uh, six officers, three on each shift. Uh, the Morehouse Sheriff's Office is covering the other two shifts, uh, the one hundred shift and the four hundred shift.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay, um, financial advisor, ten thousand dollars. Who is the financial advisor? Okay, the financial advisor is for the bond approval, for Louisiana State Bond Commission, on fire bonds, super bonds, street bonds. We have to go for the bond commission in order to proceed with, um, financing to get the best rate. So, usually Bill Bowes, and you all have met Bill Bowes, we, he is the one that takes the lead in that. And he assigns, um, someone to work out some details of that. Okay, the next one, um, civil service expense down to ten thousand from twenty thousand. Why is it less than twenty twenty, uh, three, twenty-four budget, uh, my budgeted amount was twenty-six thousand. The civil service expense was down. So, that's why that expense went down. Um, street light and traffic light. Does the two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars budget include repair on Wall Street? This particular item is to pay the energy for electricity on all street lights and city-owned traffic light. The next question was, you know, in terms of office expense, budgeted twenty thousand, used seventeen thousand. What was bought? Okay, administrative offices, mayor's office, clerks, uh, copier, leads, staplers, envelopes, copy paper, Sharpies, file folders, organizers, pens, tapes, rulers, legal pads, posting notes, checks, rubber bands, well, okay, copier, cartridges, Ziploc bags, dehumidifier, uh, absentee reporting form, binder clip, state, um, discounters, chair mat, flash drive, light bulbs, calculators, ribbons, labels, discs, name tags for counsel, purchase orders, money, drawer divided, um, compliance update, batteries, ten ninety-six tax form, markers, dry erase, uh, receipt books, ten ninety-nine, bulletin board, tablet holder stands, plywood magnifying, ruler, extension cords, and lock and cash box, things of that nature for office supplies. Page ten, environmental court, budgeted thirteen thousand, used eleven thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars, ninety-six cents. How do we get a cent in that? Are we using, in our court, the response to that is yes, by ordinance. Eleven, page nine, computer system expense. Um, were new computers bought last year and are we buying new compute, computers this year? Okay, there are no new computers that were purchased this year, to my knowledge at this point. I can, let me put another question on by then. Page fourteen, last item, um, departmental changes, what are these? Where, what are these? Okay, in the storeroom office, automotive, janitorial supplies at the city garage. Number thirteen, telephone expense, are we paying all phone bills for all department heads? No, not all, because some opted out. Number fourteen, page twenty-eight, technology expense, are we charging Louisiana Delta College? And the question was, should they pay their own maintenance? Okay, the city owns the property of Louisiana Delta Community College, invest one million dollars in improvements to the building. And I'm gonna pitch that to, um, Attorney Jones, if you want to weigh in on that. When you, when you take ownership of the building.
On the technology building.
On the technology building, the agreement we had with them was is that they initially front-loaded the money with us, and then we maintained them. We would continue the maintenance of it, much as like their attendant. Operating, they're operating the operations out the building, but we maintained it because they put up the money in the beginning to make it operational so they could use it from there. So we can, we do the continuing maintenance.
Good. Okay, let's get through all of them, because I have the question that you paid everyone, so let's get through all of this. All right, uh, computer systems expense, budgeting for computers again, where are these computers going? And all departments have a category expense for computer systems expense. Not just for computers, this is inclusive of software programs such as Microsoft, Adobe, software services, or accounting program, payroll, governmental fund, accounting, that's GFA licensing, and support, financial application licensing, and support installation of programs, et cetera, property tax program and tax rolls. We are constantly having to upgrade and make sure that we are up to date on our computer systems. We have been alerted that there's a lot of cyber attacks, and there's a lot of expense associated with maintaining our systems. So for clarity, that's not necessarily for computer, that's for those expenses associated with it. The next question that was raised, the old water contract, how does this contract work? Because of the amount of money, is the contract a service for operating, the operation and maintenance on the sewer system to be in compliance with the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality and Environmental Protection Agency? All right, Attorney Jones, I'm gonna let you weigh in on that, because this is an area that's heavily regulated by the governor, uh, and other agencies above the, the city.
So absent the regulations, the simple answer on that is, is the cost associated with that, or per the contract, where they provide all the operational services, if they make repairs or anything, they bill it back to us, we have to provide the repairs, and operation for what they provide through the contract, we don't have to have a sewer operator, they have a sewer operator. So all these licensed people are required, they provide those people towards, they do do it at a service cost, but the bulk of the contract is around if they have to make any maintenance repairs or anything like that, or they make recommendations that things have to be upgraded based on the fact that their sewer operators looked at it, each one of these sewer systems, you have to have a sewer operator by state to respond to anything. They have that person, instead of us having to have that person. Uh, so any of those expenses related that come from the contract within where they've either made a recommendation that we have to have this done in order to be in compliance, or if we get a notice from DEQ, we give it to them, their sewer operator looks at it, responds, and says, hey, you need to make these changes here or there, you need to upgrade the system. So it probably operational, it's hard to say where would cost if we, we in-house that, other than to say that the contracts generally just provide for the expenses that were noted there. It's kind of a conduit system. Anything that they have to do to us, they can bill us for, and say, hey, we need to pay this, get this done to the system. So it's, their contract is to make sure the sewer system and the, it's operational and up to standard with the fact that the contract allows them to say, hey, you need to make these repairs here in order for us to continue to be able to operate your system. Well, you have to be in compliance. So that's where those expense lineups come from. So what would traditionally be your sewer department that you'd see a budget lineup before, that's all allocated to that contract where they do it.
Okay, skip one. Um, hotel motel expense, would like some clarity for what this expense is for. Actually, the hotel motel tax is a dedicated tax by legislative, state legislative to, for upkeep, specifically for the municipal center, and that's been in place for some years now. Okay, it takes us to LA DOTB, street maintenance, what is this budget for? Okay, this is a revenue from the Louisiana Department of Transportation, development to mow and pick up trash on the state streets within the city limits. And the last one on this particular request, information was miscellaneous expense, what is this expense for? Annual backflow preventers, testing for 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 welcome signs, cleanup expense, boat park assistance with the H-bag application, popcorn kits, duct tape, um, the burial in an unmarked grave, no graves at Christ, um, cemetery, property appraisal, for nineteen oh six, Cooper Lake Road survey, the plot and legal description of lazy electricity, damaged welcome signs, survey for the trees at the Diddo Building, water fountain, application of H-bag, and survey on trees. The next live question came from District B. Sir?
Is there any way that we can get a cocktail?
Okay, it's gonna be up on the way upside within twenty-four hours, but I have here stuff that I was scribbling on. Okay, this is my working draft, let's go on with, um, council members, oh wait, let's, let's go uninterrupted, let's go to Councilmember Charles Bradford, District B, question from the special meeting, June twenty, twenty-fourth. Okay, police shifts, well, you, you get your opportunity, but I was responding to all of the, the questions, police shifts. Wants breakdown of the shifts, okay, I believe, um, Chief Reed, I believe your response addressed, addressed that. Okay, why isn't the marshal's office in the budget? It is in the budget. Yes, sir. I don't hear that from me, but it's built into the budget. But let me, let me finish, I, I gave uninterrupted opportunity for all of the questions that have been. Let's, let's proceed with this, you get your opportunity. Uh, we should budget and provide for summer program youth, that was one of your questions, or statements basically. We rely upon the state-funded summer programs. Number four, parks and recreation should have docks and swimming pool in the twenty-four budget. This is pending a cost analysis to be done, and we're waiting for the engineer, he's, he is, um, want to get someone who specializes in that area. Okay. Number five, why can't the city help with elderly home repairs? I'm gonna pivot that to, I'm gonna pivot that to Attorney Jones.
This is the, which one is it?
Okay, what I have in my notes is Title VII, Section fourteen, prohibited use of funds. So I'll get you to the spot on that.
So the Constitution prohibits the donation of public services or money or items of public entities, which would be this municipality, the city of Ashland. Prohibits just donating to an elderly person, you just can't go out and donate, that's what cooperative endeavors are for, is to make that transition if you're gonna do something like that. Uh, but we can't just donate funds to a private person, entity, corporation, nonprofit, it has to be, even if we do public to public, we donate something to the sheriff's office, although they're a public entity, they're their own subdivision, we still have to do a cooperative endeavor. There are some car rides for limited things, but the general rule is, is anything that transitions from the city to somebody else has to be done through a cooperative endeavor, otherwise, it's a prohibited transaction, which is correct.
Okay, I think the next question was wants the salary of code enforcement, record coordinator, treasurer, uh, city clerk and tax collector, that's a request. Um, number seven, we need to put money aside to move the city forward, that was a personal statement. Why is there a budget for record coordinator and not the city clerk? Okay, that was a question. The budget does include a city clerk. The next question from District B was, we should think about putting police officers on full duty, I think that was addressed with, uh, Chief Reed's statement on the prerequisite that's required in order to do that. The next question was, put the police department back together, which is a personal statement.
So it's like a Q and A, sir? So it's like a Q and A section, right?
I'm responding to, last week, when you were not here, I asked each, um, member of the council to give a list of questions, so we recorded those questions, not providing answers, but you will get an opportunity. So I just wanted to do this in an uninterrupted, so every council member that raised a question, because they were uninterrupted when they posed these questions, and I think this keeps the flow going. Oh, number, okay, we're gonna stop. We should think about putting the police officers back on duty. As I said, I think Chief Reed addressed that, and what that entails. Um, police department back together to generate revenue, that was a personal statement. Eleven, we are paying over a hundred thousand dollars to the sheriff's office. The response to that is adequate safety in order to cover all of the, the shifts. Attorney Jones, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, uninterrupted. People, not yet, attorney, let her finish.
I wanted y'all to have both the legal side.
We're gonna, we're gonna do that later on, let, let us, well, let's go uninterrupted, because I got a bunch of questions I need to ask also.
The chair, the chair asked for the attorney to.
You gotta take a motion, do a, do a motion there, let's do it right then. If the chair, we gonna do it right, you gotta make a motion to talk to the attorney, am I right? You the chairperson, so if you wanna speak to the attorney without being uninterrupted, then you make a motion and we vote on it. That's where we gonna start conducting business, because how can we respond to this when we don't have a copy of, you said a rough draft?
This is a rough draft?
But we, when you, you just going down and lying, and how we gonna know how to respond if we don't have anything in front of us? You only got the copy.
I'm reading the responses.
So I mean, we gotta remember what question to ask.
We should set aside two hundred fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars for each district to clean up blighted property. That was the request made by the, um, councilman District B. I asked, um, Attorney Jones to weigh in with a legal opinion, you will get an opportunity, just as you were uninterrupted in the last meeting, so that you will have information in front of you, or you can jot down your questions or statements that you would like. But I will make sure that each speaker is protected when he's speaking in his time. The next question from District B, the minutes are just a snapshot of the meetings, and would like more precise details. Do not hand up a check mark for, um, for the legal opinion to weigh in on this, but minutes are written according to Louisiana statute forty-two, twenty, and twenty-one. Okay, that brings us to District C. Mr. Green, okay, parks and recreation, reallocate some of the funds from the track program to other programs. The response to that, the track program has sponsors. And any, any other group wants to sponsor a team, make a donation to that. Number two, need to come up with a plan to get one or two pools open, that goes back to the analysis that's pending to be done. Number three, police investigation fee, zero for budget, what does that constitute? Okay, I believe, um, Chief Reed, I'm gonna ask you to come back. It's, um, this page requires a report.
So that's not uninterrupted, right? By the way, Chief Reed talking, we can't ask questions?
You, you get your opportunity. Let's proceed with the, uh.
David, is that, do a motion supposed to be made for her to speak to you, yourself, or Reed? Your soul, then we not conducting business directly. So the, the chair, the chairperson can conduct the meeting. Now, the, just as y'all get a point of information, Robert Rule's order would allow a point of information. It doesn't, yours doesn't require a motion, hers doesn't require a motion, just the same as y'all ask for a point of information, it goes to the chair. As the chairperson getting a point of information from somebody, the chairperson is the ultimate ruler, so they, or not the ruler, but the decider. So that chairperson can ask for a point of information and for clarity without a motion. As far as bringing people up from the audience, that is going to be something that comes from the chair that allows her to bring the department in, in that having to come before the board. It's kind of a combination of Robert's rules or order there.
That's perfect, so when, so now when it's time for us to rank up the same department here, is we have the right to do so as well?
Well, the chair doesn't give you that, Roy, but you can ask for the, the mayor to do that, and then that would be on her to have them come forward.
Keep, um, counsel, make sure you keep that same measure when we then would ask you a question, sir.
Okay, okay, you get your opportunity.
Can we make a motion and move this on? I mean, I mean, she, she going with something, she not answering the questions, uh, she, 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 she not answering the questions.
Uh, we can't ask questions, she just, we know a lot of stuff that we asked last week, we like have a motion that, 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 whatever she's doing, be tabled, and we move on to the budget, I think with the budget meeting. I mean, you know, this, this thing to be moved on, uh, it's not, it's, it's not good, and you're not getting any answers.
I mean, the rules, the rules apply in the table, see, you're on the resolution item, and, uh, you could, you can make a motion for action, and then once there's a second, then it goes into discussion body, which then rolls into normal discussion.
Well, if you get a motion to action, I like to.
What, what motion for action? Action meaning that, uh, you either take some action, like, uh, table, approve, disapprove.
A motion to table, this, whatever she's doing, yeah, the way she's doing. No, it's not, it's not, look, look, counsel, it's not on the agenda, first of all. Now, she, she broke in between, she broke in the agenda with what she wanted Reed, find it on the agenda, she got all, of course, what she's doing is not part of this agenda. Okay, if she, if she wanted to put this in, if she wanted to take this approach and repeat what we did a week ago on our question and answer, we haven't got an answer on yet, then she should have put that on the agenda. She had to land the agenda. This is, this is, that's, this is inappropriate, inappropriate what she's doing, but it's not part of the agenda.
So part of that, part of that act.
We have, we have, we have, we have had, we have voted to add whatever she's doing, that on this agenda, the schedule, either one tonight. We have, we haven't made a motion to, you hear that, she just started doing that. She just took control of the meeting.
So.
It's not on the agenda, and it shouldn't be her.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to it, where you're at. So as a general outlet, and I like to hold her Robert's rules order, I'm not the chairperson, but from, from the legal standpoint, the chairperson can announce an item, okay, can bring forth an item to, to the governing body.
Announce it, right.
Correct, and there's, there is some discussion in Robert's order about a short intro, you'll have them introduce or bring things, much as whatever you see on TV, you'll see the legislature, uh, they'll say, this is requisite of such and such a bill, he'll announce a short, brief overlay of what it is, and then they go. The only time, if you, if something were to cut that off, you would have to, since the item is called up or on it, then you would do a motion, like, you'd say, hey, I do a motion that we table this, I do a motion we approved the resolution, I do a motion we declined it. Then at that point, when you have a motion, then you look it for a second, then you go into discussion on the call, the question, the call to question is whatever the body of the motion is. And that's where we go into discussion then.
I like, I like to make a motion that we, uh, move on from, from what, whatever she read. It's not the agenda, I don't even know what it is. She said, she said something we said last week, uh, my notes don't reflect her note, what I said last week, some of the things. Some of them didn't, but like I said, it's not on the agenda. Now, if it's something she wanted to discuss on the agenda with the council, she should have placed it on agenda, or asked that the agenda be extended. You know, we had like the vote on, should the agenda be extended, but we could say yes or no.
So if, if, if underneath Robert's rules order, if a councilman felt that somebody was out of order, you could call for a point for it, which would then, which would then go to the chair. The chair would make a decision on if he was out of order. If the chair makes a ruling, then you can appeal, and then appeals to the general, the general body. They vote, it's by majority vote, and then if the body votes differently, then the ruling goes to... If, if that's the best way I can explain the quality of the procedure. So if you felt somebody was not within the call of the meeting agenda with something that's going, you can do a, a point of order.
Well, let, let, let's get a point of order. Let her finish, let, let, just let her finish, let the mayor finish up. She got close to the end, let her, let her go ahead and finish, we can proceed. Just let her finish.
Or you can take a, or you can make a motion for an action on the agenda, on which would then force it to the board.
Well, she, 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 uh, it's not on the agenda, it's inappropriate, okay, to do what she's doing. I mean, we can, we can go on with Robert Rule's order here, it's about, that's one pages here, I'm going through it and you go through it.
That's a full report that you would ask.
She, well, she, uh, she got an order. Upon an order, I'm asking for a form of order, because this, this, mayor, this is just delays, delay, and we not, we supposed to be taking care, taking care of the community business. To, to go, to sit here and do two hours of time, when you could have answered that, uh, put it on the agenda, we had a chance to respond to it then, you gonna get here in a night, then we, we supposed to be preparing budget to get ready for June thirtieth, and here we are talking about something we discussed, and if you wanted to have a discussion, you should have put it on the agenda, we could have been prepared for the discussion.
Okay. The chair's position on that, in the last meeting, there were a series of questions raised. We received an email, we did not get a response, so the questions were record, recorded, and as courtesy, this information is being given tonight.
I didn't get any of that.
You stepped out, but, uh...
I what?
You stepped out when the rest of your points were made.
Oh, I didn't get any, I didn't get any.
But I'm, no, no banner backing for well, okay. The chair's gonna proceed with this, near the end, breakdown of police department budget, see pages twenty-nine through thirty-one, a proposed budget. Police department needs to use what is left of their budget to get what they need at the fis, at the end of the fiscal year. Response to that, they go back to general fund and reallocate, reallocate it for new fiscal year. Wants breakdown of each department head's budget, see proposed budget under each department's head. Look into how adequate, um, how to acquire police cars, that's an ongoing process. Seek out grants to alleviate blighted profits, that's an ongoing process. Also, there was a request for a three-year study on the sewer. The last, Mr. Locke, that's District E. Inquire about, there is no budget to train people to work on equipment owned by the city. City garage does basic maintenance, such as oil changes, tires, changing belts, et cetera. Heavy equipment such as fire trucks and other heavy, heavy equipment requires specialized mechanical expertise, where work is performed and can be under warranty. The second, uh, statement that Mr. Locke required about was how the budget is done, and response to that is proposed budget is prepared according to the Legislative Budget Act based on the forecast of anticipated revenues and projected expenses. Okay, I committed that I would have responses, and I've done just that. That brings us to the resolution.
No, 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 no. No, you, you, we was patiently sitting here, you said uninterrupted. Now, it's time for question and answer. We was real polite, I was just chopping at the bits, because those answers that you, that we requested, that you, the answers that you gave us, the questions and answers, they don't resonate, not with me. Because when I ask you a question, you just give us a general answer and just gonna skip to the next thing, that don't work with me. We asked for specific answers, and you just gave us general vague information. It's like we kindergarten, you gonna give us something, but then you not gonna let us respond. Council, city attorney Jones, I try to be polite, I respect everybody, but don't come here with a snow job. That's not happening. Now, first of all, when you come with a document, if it's gonna be legal, if it's gonna be recorded, each council member should have a copy of it. Am I right? So how can, how can I look at some when I don't have a copy of it? Because if I bring something for the board first, they didn't tell me, do you got a copy for everybody? So how can we go along with some, we ain't, we don't have, we not Einstein, I'm not gonna remember everything that came up. And then, like, when I asked you a question about park recreation, it was a, it's, it's a statement. When we ask questions about stuff that people ask us to ask the administration, it's statements. I specifically, Councilman Green from District C, I asked for a company, it's a breakdown of the department, of the police department. Did you hear the answer I got? You attorney, did you, everybody heard the answer I got, right? Is that an answer?
No. I heard that.
I, that, that is...
Let's get back on...
No, no, we would not finish, man.
Last person?
When, when a councilman have the floor, and you acknowledge me by not, by letting me address the attorney, you cannot interrupt, let's be respectful, let's have some decorum. I respect you, please respect me when I have the floor, because it's not right. I'm not speaking about James Green, I'm speaking about what's right in the community. Those questions was just, just to answer, just to silence people. There was no definitive answers to not one of those questions that was asked, and it is wrong. The city is at, we, we, we're the crooks right now, we're a crossroad in this city, and it's time for comprehensive leadership. And we cannot continuously, continue to go down this path. I respect you, mayor, I respect this administration, I respect you board, I respect you there, but those answers was unacceptable. And for her, for me not to even be able to look, and Councilman Green alluded to it, how can we ask a question when we, we don't have any, anything? Nobody can remember, we cannot remember all those questions, we not jotting it all down, and like Chief Reed, you brought him up, he did a good presentation. I did not get one answer that I asked for. Not your fault, chief, I'm saying, from the mayor. I asked him for that for a reason. He stated that we're in the process of hiring three officers, maybe four. My thing is, what I want to ask him while he was here, did you have a surplus? If you have a surplus, why put it back in the general fund when you got three officers that you gonna hire? What they gonna walk? If you turn, if you got a surplus, why not use that surplus to purchase two vehicles? You know what's gonna happen if we don't do it that, that way? Because, you know, it's the new year, what's gonna happen is, you gonna put a, the city council in a bind. Everybody's gonna graduate from that academy. You gonna have four people, then you gonna come up here with, we gonna have to purchase four cars all at once. This money was already allocated. Why turn it back into the general fund? You know what allocation mean, that means that we gave it to you to spend. Don't turn it back in, spend it. I mean, it's not wasteful spending. You say you need the cars, you probably want, some of the police cars probably wouldn't make the street port. Buy you a couple of police cars. And that's just one question. And it's like park recreation, we talk about allocation of funds, the allocation of funds. I, you heard, it said donations. What kind of answer is that? We talking about what comes from the city. We know everybody gonna be donating, I've been in park, I've been working park creation like thirty years, I've been coaching for about twenty-five, thirty years. I know exactly about donations, I'm talking about what comes from the city of Bastrop. And the swimming pools, you say it's in the making. Everybody's always talking about in the process of doing something. We at a critical junction in this city, and we gotta, we just been here three years, it's time for us to take action. We need creative leadership, we need creative minds to come together and resolve and solve these problems. And until we do that, we gonna be at the same point that we are today. Six months from now, if we keep allowing this to happen. So I would ask this mayor and this administration to please, when the general public wants to know something, to be more specific, be more transparent, and it's all worked together. Because the pool, there's, nobody said, you said, is in the project, in the making, it's been in the making since I've been, well, it's been in the making for three years. What, when is the, when is the projected date that some tangible actions will occur? It's dealing with our youth, the swimming pool, the police department.
What's the timeframe, Attorney Jones?
I don't have a timeframe, it's not, it's not, it's not in the, I, I, I know the charter back and forth, you being, you being disrespectful, you being mad.
We, we're gonna get back on track.
You cannot, Attorney Jones.
We are, I'm not, I'm not gonna debate, we're gonna get back on track, you're gonna have an added...
Attorney Jones, am I allowed to speak?
Attorney Jones, I'm getting back on track with the agenda, each council member, we have an opportunity to speak to this.
We don't have a time limit, you gotta, you gotta let them speak.
We ain't, we have never voted on a time limit with this council. I've looked at the charter, I've looked through the minutes. We don't have, so we can filibuster if we want to, because you know the filibuster is right, talk, 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 because we don't have a timeframe, sir.
We're voting that we are, we're gonna read. We, we, we ain't threatening to do this, sir.
I need to make a comment before we can try to move on, please. Please. Before we can even move on, before we can even vote on this budget, certain things we want in place, certain questions we want answered. We cannot vote on a budget that is presented to us like that. We have specific questions, we, we wanted the police department open back again, and that's what we want. We are paying the sheriff's department to operate shifts one and four, that's out of the chief's mouth. But he did say he has eight patrol officers. If he has eight patrol officers, we need to take over our own police department. We can run two per shift, I've said this a thousand times, go back in the tapes. Two of our officers per shift, we, we take the lead, the sheriff's department coming as a third man. We will still pay them, we don't mind paying them, but we need to take the lead of our own police department. It is senseless that it is closed down and we have eight officers. And as far as the revenue that was, the, the money that was left over, I saw police officers riding in old cars this week. Why not use the money? Why not try to buy you the vehicles, because we sure will be in a pickle like, like Councilman James said. When those officers become trained, what they gonna ride, horses? They won't have cars to ride. So before we pass this budget, we have to have a tentative plan to try to open this police department again, that's just one of the things.
Okay, let the record reflect that these questions were presented in the last council meeting. We wrote them down, and it was a courtesy to give some clarity to the questions that were raised. So now we'll get back on track with this agenda. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-sixty-seven, a resolution amending the consolidated budget, general fund and all special funds for revenues and expenditures for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, for the fiscal year beginning July one. I see an error, ending July one, twenty-twenty-four, that should be corrected. And ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, we need to make a correction on that. And adopting the consolidated budget for general fund and all special revenue funds for revenues and expenditures for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, for the fiscal year for twenty-twenty-five. Okay, now, I will entertain a motion of this resolution. Mr. Green, you have a question for clarity?
Yeah, I was just, uh, is it possible, do you have on hand a general fund budget, balanced right now?
Okay. Let's look at your budget sheet, you have. Starting over with?
Because the, the reason I asked also too, Mary, because even I didn't vote on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yes, sir.
It look like it's gonna be, uh, two point, two million dollars, it's gonna be covered by the general fund?
Attorney Jones, you want to weigh in on that?
All time tour?
The twenty, the twenty, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, I'm looking at, it look like your revenue, your expenditures exceeded your revenues. So it's looking like it's a two point three million dollars, that's, where do, so where would that come from? It typically come from the general funds, right?
Correct, I'm, I'm not the, I'm not the...
Okay, so just follow me, so if that come from...
So, but generally, you'd have to cover it by the...
General fund, okay, so if that, if that two point three million dollars covered from general fund, then when you going into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, you already fin, adopt a budget that's, the expenditures already exceed the revenues. So at that moment, we have to know that we have what, what's in the general funds to cover the deficit of, hold on. It's looking like, so that's all together right now, we looking at, we looking at two point three million dollars from the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and we looking at, we looking at another one point eight, one point eight million dollars.
So, so the legal question is, I don't need the budget act in order for it to be a balanced budget that's required. You, if you propose a budget that has a, a net operating loss, that loss has to be covered by the, by the amount that the general fund...
So in order, in order for you to know, in order for you to know, either to approve the, the, uh, revision, and also to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five, you need to know what's in the general fund. So anyone of you guys that voted on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, know what's in the general fund right now? Because right now, we, we looking to, even if we set this, uh, revised budget, we gonna have to pull a two point, if I'm, if I'm, you correct me if I'm wrong, right? Two point three million dollars from the general fund to cover the twenty-four, the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So that's why I say it's, it's, it's important to know what's in the general funds, because we looking, we looking to, we looking to take two point three million dollars. I don't have my, I just wanna ask. Okay, so, so, so we looking at two point five? We gonna have a two point five, I see, I know it. This, so this is the unit, so that's something, so right now, of that two point five, two point, the two point five we have left for the twenty-three, twenty-four, two point three of it's gonna cover what's in twenty-three, twenty-four.
I think, looking at the sheet, it shows that you, at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four...
Oh, is, is that the four million dollars, just, okay, four million dollars, okay.
And then by the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, it'd be down to two point five.
Mr. Green asked for, uh, asked a question for clarity. So now, I ask for a motion?
I, I have another question for clarity, please.
Go ahead.
Um, legislation, new legislation says that we have to fund our marshals' office, and I see it's nowhere in this budget, so how can we pay... So how can we pass a budget? And we know we gonna be op- operating outside of what we supposed to be doing, there's no way we can do it. There's no way, there's nowhere in here, the only thing that's in here, I think, is probably fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. That we, um, in the past had been paying the marshal, part of the marshal's salary, so why isn't that in this budget?
I don't have a co- I seen the budget, I saw it earlier, I, I don't have a copy of the budget.
Can you wanna look, look at this a little bit, because.
But yes, you would have to essentially come back in.
But I wanna know, we wanna do it in the beginning, we don't do it right.
Correct, so you would have to, if you adopted this one, then you have to come back and before all this, adopt the ones that you can do it, so.
So, so right now, if I'm, right now, if I'm not mistaken, we don't have to go out every year to fund, to get money to push this over. Because we have enough money in our general funds to cover. According to how this budget, just the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and now the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we gonna be at a hundred, at the end of this, at the end of the twenty-five year, we gonna be at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that's in our general funds. Now, when it comes to doing the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, how we gonna make it, how we gonna? Because it's like each, each year we going into over a million dollars like that, just twenty-three, twenty-four, two million, two point three million. Then you got twenty-four, twenty-five projected to be one point eight million, and we'll, after then, we gonna have a ninety, a hundred and ninety-eighty-eight thousand dollars in our bank account, in our general funds, I'm sorry. So then when it comes to the budget after that, then we'll go back to borrowing money again.
The marshals. Paying money is blended into this budget, the utilities, the office space, it's just like the judge's office, it's not the salaries. To, to say that there's an isolated budget out.
So what, what part is it underlayed, what section?
Was it built into, um, salaries with the city funds on that, in, in those line items?
I think we probably wanna see it separate, just like all the other offices are separate, partner recreation, administration. It, it should be separate, it's a whole separate office, and we would like to see the breakdown.
Okay, so is, is that a request for the breakdown for the marshal's office?
Yes, ma'am, add it to the budget, yes, ma'am, specific items.
What about, um, the judge's office, because that office is supplemented as well?
Yes, ma'am, that, that would give us some, a better understanding.
The judge, the judge and the marshal, both should be on here, se- separated, uh, the structure, and, uh, outside, I, I wanna say, you know, whatever.
If you have a courtesy, you can give it to me.
By the city marshal, or, or tax, by the city marshal, the law, uh, Mr. Jones' law required to refund the, fund it. Okay, I'm, I'm actually just, I'm, I'm just, I'm going somewhere, so if you look at some of what they've been operating on. That budget has been less than what we paid some of our senior employees, the whole budget for that office. So they can't operate on that, that's green, it was, it was passed, that's green, we wanna see how much that we, how much that we actually. That, that, that they've been operating on versus what we gonna fund it. That's why Ms., uh, Ms., Ms. Tapping wants to know, she wanna see the breakdown. And not have it blended in, because when you say blended in, you talking about, oh, utilities, all this is one big bill. We just segregating off what we gonna, what they gonna pay, or what we gonna pay, we actually talking about operational, operational expenses. What is it gonna take to run the department? I think we have a, we have a, she gave us a list, somebody gave us a list, Ms. Reed, what it's gonna take to fund the office. And based on my observation and just looking, what they've been running off of is less than. About sixty thousand or something a year for the department, so that, that is, that, that's unacceptable for one department to operate on less than that. And you got one, one or two people in code enforcement, their budget is, is, is more than that, and you got more people than that office with more accountability. So I think that's why we requesting a breakdown of what it's gonna take to operate that department.
And, and I can tell you from looking at this, I'm, I'm seeing the sheet, it says the, the cost outfit, one deputy, the, the cost of a vehicle. We, we're gonna, we're gonna have to work with the marshal's office in order to obtain what is kind of similar to what like the police department is, what is the salary. Things that are necessary, just, just not cost of, 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 this, this is, this is a very broken down, one expense item, which would be equipment, supplies, things like that.
That's what salary costs.
Yeah, need, need actual, kind of like you see in the budget, with the things, and then be able to, and the law requires to be funded necessary expenses of marshal's office. And I've had discussions with.
Okay, okay, uh, we need to get back on track.
We gonna get right back, we gonna get right back on track.
I'm not gonna be long, please, please, let me go, but you know, to avoid some of the things where, uh, uh, what we experienced tonight. We're, we're, we're really not operating according to our charter. These meetings, I, I, I wanna speak on this because it eliminate a lot of back and forwards, make it look like we don't know what we doing, but anyway, let me say this. The power and the duty of a mayor and the board of all the men. The mayor and the board of all have the care and management and control of the city of Bastrop property. As well as fan呐s. Now, when you come here and your budgets, uh, for doubt, us giving the, the ultimate, giving the chance to have any input. On each department head, how many men we have in, uh, code enforcement, the manager, the, the ultimate have a right to make that, be a part of that decision. I mean, when you just fix something here, say this, hit the button, here, here, we don't know what the chief need, we don't know what the fire chief need, we don't know what the code enforcement need, they should come before the councilmen. With their individual budget, and we discussing eye and eye, what's good, what we can cut, what, what help, what they can go, go without. It, it's a teamwork thing, what I'm saying. The, the confrontation here with budget, and we keep being late and delayed, because some been pushed out, the councilmen though, and we have no understanding in our, in our. Let's follow the charter, the charter spares that out. It, 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 and another thing to, I'm gonna get down here, we cannot operate our city government, councilmen, councilmen. We cannot operate our city government without a clerk accord. It's bit, uh, Attorney, will you get section eight, please, you the council, section eight of the, I mean, of the charter, please, section eight. It tell you who all has to be present to operate the city of Bastrop.
Okay.
I, 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 I'm just, let's get back, let's get back on track. Well, we on track, we, we, I'm.
Get back on track, because, Mayor.
We, now, see, we can never be on track all over the right, you, you had, I had to throw, councilman, could you, could you read the section eight to, 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 to the ultimate, please?
Let's get back on track, the.
It just, it just states who the officers of the city are, it doesn't state, it just states who the officers in the city are.
Who the officers are, do, do, say the clerk should be a part of it as well?
It says that they are an officer, but that you can make.
Okay, right, okay, the clerk should be here, because clerk have all the information we need on the budget, she the all of, for the city of Bastrop, she have all finance, all documents. And we sitting here asking the mayor, with all due respect, the mayor, the mayor don't have access to, I mean, the mayor, not the clerk. You know, that person is appointed and bonded to operate the government of this, this community as a clerk. We are, we have been operating for the last thirty days, we got a clerk, but we should have got a, a pro temp, uh, uh, and so for our intimate, so our intimate, excuse me, an intimate clerk. To come in and carry on the duties in the function of the city of Bastrop. Now, with that said, we don't know who have our, I said this once and for, we don't know who have our seal to the clerk, we don't know what's taking place in the city right now, we don't know what's being pushed. And that's a, that's a disrespect to this, uh, this, this is very intelligence, uh, uh, ultimately, like, I think everybody have stuff care about how we do things in our community. And have to keep slapping each other, and the mayor stabbing, and the, we stabbing the mayor, that ain't the way the business supposed to run. The charter's clear as our heart goes to run, we supposed to running the unity, effort, no one, no big eye, no big view. We supposed to be concerned about the welfare of this community, that's why we having, I said it last week, that's why we having a problem we having as a community. Because we have a responsibility as a government body to conduct this community and carry on good business according to our charter.
Okay, let's, let's get back.
Mayor, can I make a statement?
Yes, sir, Mr. Law.
You know, uh, someone taking minutes.
Yes, sir.
Anything that is read into the minutes, anything that's read into the minute, especially if you're asking questions. Everyone on the coffee should have a visible copy of it. We don't have that copy, so we can't vote on this tonight, that's the way. You read our statement, but just like we say, yeah, with your draft, every member of this council should have had a copy of that, maybe. You can't, you can't pass this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Law.
And I move for a joining.
Second. Second.